In the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, before we get underway tonight, there's a couple of administrative matters that I like to, I don't like to, but I have to go over with everyone. First, welcome to the July meeting of the Arundicoid Zoning Board of Appeals. In the case of fire, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record, not a verbatim transcript, in order to help her have the minutes accurately reflect who says what. When you come to the microphone, please identify yourself with your name and your address each time that you come to the microphone. We follow the items on the agenda in the order in which they appear on the agenda. There are extra copies of the agenda available by the door. The way it works is, once the case gets called, the applicant or their representative will come to the podium, identify themselves or herself by name, state their address, pause a moment, raise their right hand, be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of the case by the applicant or their representative, board members may ask questions or engage in discussions with the applicant. Once that process has all been concluded, we then open the hearing to public input. There are three categories of public input that have been identified so far. The first category that we address are those who wish to speak in favor of the application. The next category are those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And then the third category are those who have no position with respect to the application, but would like to talk to us about something that relates to the application. The way the process works is, when we open it up to public input, anyone who wants to speak in favor will be asked to line up first and approach the podium one at a time, remembering to identify yourself when you come to the podium. Then those in opposition, and then those who wish to speak to us all in the same fashion. After all the public input has been concluded, we then return the podium to the applicant or their representative to address any concerns that were raised during the public input portion. Once that's concluded, then we close the case with respect to that application, and we'll move on to the next application on our agenda. Once we've completed all of the cases on the agenda, the board will take a short recess. And when we return, we will deliberate on the cases in the order in which the applicants, in the order in which they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant remains present. So if the first applicant has left, but the second applicant is present, we would take the second applicant's case first, move on to the next applicant who's present, then go back to the top of the agenda and complete those cases for those who are not present. You're not obligated to stay for the deliberation portion of the meeting. You're also not allowed to participate in the deliberation portion of the meeting unless something specific is requested by one of the members of the board. If you're interested in knowing what the decision was with respect to an application, you can either catch us on, I think we're on 1301 now, or you can call the zoning and planning office tomorrow morning after nine o'clock at the town hall, and they will be glad to share with you the decisions that we made tonight. Normally, we'd remove to the first case on the agenda at this point. However, there are a few other things that I want to address. First, I'd like to welcome Charles C. Pickett, who is our new alternate member of the board. So on any occasion when one of the members of the board is unable to be present to participate in the meeting, she will appear as part of the board and participate in the meeting and the deliberations. Also, I'd like to recognize Ryan Travis. I read the newspaper, and I saw that Ryan is one of the nominees for the Ignite Future Leaders Award. Congratulations.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you.
And then, a historical note. Tomorrow is the 243rd birthday of our great country. And you might think, what's he talking about? Because everybody knows that America's birthday is the Fourth of July. No, it is not. America was born on the Second of July, when the Second Continental Congress unanimously adopted the resolution offered by Charles Lee of Virginia that these colonies are and of right ought to be free and independent states. And John Adams wrote to Abigail on the Third, telling her how the Second would be celebrated for decades to come with fireworks, parades, prayer meetings, picnics, and other celebrations. We celebrate the Fourth because it was written in big letters on top of the Declaration because that's the morning that the Congress approved the wording of the Declaration. But our birthday is actually tomorrow. So say happy birthday tomorrow to our great country. With that note, we will now go to the first case on the agenda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number ZB 1907-1, upon the matter of request by Phil Morgan for an area variance to construct a new garage addition with less than required front setback on premises 162 Hastings Lane in an R1 residential district.
Phil Morgan, 162 Hastings Lane.
Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay.
So I laid out somewhat of a plan on the documents that I submitted. Basically, the garage that we have now is mostly unusable for today's vehicles due to height and a stairwell that was built into the garage space back four years after it was built or something. So what we propose to do in the current garage space is create a mudroom into the house because currently from the garage, you can also not enter our house. So we plan to use some of that space to create a mudroom and then bring out on a gable approximately 22 to 24 feet, depending on really an architect's expert opinion, with a garage where we can actually park our two vehicles. I do have a letter of support from our neighbor directly to the right as you're facing our house. We have no neighbor to the left as we are, we're on a circle. I don't know if you can see on the map there. And after our property line is a 50-foot town right of way, and then the curve really kind of starts there, so.
So if I may, the exact amount of feet that you're coming out forward of the current garage, I kind of walked it off, and it looked like it was about 25 or 27 feet forward. On your drawing on your map where it's highlighted, you've got 24 feet forward. Is it going to be 24 or is it going to be? Because one of them will put you out further than your stamped concrete currently and almost even with the big tree.
Okay.
And then if you go back a couple of feet, you're actually right at the corner of the stamped concrete.
Yeah. When, excuse me, when we did the stamped concrete, we didn't really plan it for a depth to match with the garage. It would likely be closer to 26 feet, as what you're saying, likely, just to get cars in there and still have room for the mudroom and walk in front of the cars to get into the house, the mudroom house.
So you're planning on the 26 feet or 24 feet?
I would say it's probably be closer to 26. If we could do that, then we would do that. If we could get 24, then we would probably get 24, as long as it was usable in, you know, in architectural standpoint.
If you did the 24, based on what you have on your, on your drawing, then your setback would be 25.6. If you do 27, you're taking away three feet of setback, so you'd be down to 22-foot setback. So you're coming forward that much further.
Right.
My suggestion is keep it at 24, no further forward. That should be enough, you know, for an 18-foot car and be able to get around the front of it.
Yep.
Anyway, that's just a observation.
Phil, can, what do you, what's going to happen with the roof? Are you going to slope the roof or are you going to keep it the way? Like, can you just describe what's going to go on with that?
So if you're a gable roof, if you're basically plop a triangle on top of a rectangle and just go straight to the house. I took a photograph of a house nearby that kind of looks similar to that, if I could...
Yeah, you can just give it to Tim and he'll pass it around.
It's not the exact scenario, but you kind of get the idea of a gable resting against a two-story house.
Okay. Are you going to be losing your windows in that front bedroom?
I don't plan to. I did have an architect, just to get an idea of his cost, say, you know, we may have to move them out, or we wouldn't be able to raise them, but we could move them to the outer corners. I would not like to have to do that, just with cost and work. I have passed around the letter of support as well. And if you're looking at the one kind of Google photo, it's the house, the White House to the right, directly next to us.
Questions? The letter of support is signed by William and Donna Torpe, who live at 150 Hastings Lane. And it indicates that they fully support the garage enlargement plans, that it will further improve the appearance of their home, and will have no effect on them or other neighbors' view of the street or neighborhood. Seeing no other comments or questions from the board, we'll open it up to public input. Does anybody wish to speak in favor of this application? Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody like to talk to us about garages, gable roofs, or anything like that? Has no opinion with respect to the application. Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you, sir. Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB 1907-2, upon the matter of request by Miranda and Steve Del Vecchio for a special use permit to harbor six hens with coop pursuant to section 235-70 of Town Code on premises 115 Valley View Crescent in an R1 residential district.
Miranda Del Vecchio, 115 Valley View Crescent.
Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So I kind of leave this out in my letter of intent, but what my husband and I are requesting is a special use permit in order to house six hens. Our acreage total is about 1.2, and we're also requesting approval to be able to build a coop for them, so coop for the size of six chickens.
Are you familiar with the, well, first off, when I read your application, you were referring to that you were looking for an area variance?
Yeah, I think I was a little bit confused about the, like, the, what I was specifically supposed to be stating within the application.
You cite the factors related to an area variance, which, for the benefit of yourself and those who are in attendance or watching, those conditions, those factors don't apply to a special use permit. Unlike an area variance, which allows for someone to deviate from the provisions of the zoning ordinance, the special use permit is a means of regulating a use that the town board has determined is acceptable in the town. So the issue before us is not whether or not having chickens in Arundicoid is a good idea or not. It is with respect to your particular application and your lot, what restrictions, if any, would be appropriate to place on having chickens on your lot in order to be consistent with the interests of the town. So it's a completely different scenario. You are coming to us for permission to have something that the town board says is okay to have under the conditions that we set forth. And I don't know if you're familiar, but we have sort of evolved over time into allowing for a five-year term on a special use permit. We've generally limited it to four hens and no roosters. We've requested submission of a health certificate from a veterinarian every year. We've, we want the coop to be at least four feet from the boundaries of the property and in the rear of the property. We like, we requested the owner dig a trench two foot deep all the way around and put in the chicken wire or protective fence barrier for that two feet underground to prevent predators from burrowing in from the ground. We asked the town staff to conduct an inspection of the premises every year without any prior notice. And we also require the owner of the chickens to store the food in a closed container in, preferably inside, and to clean the coop regularly, at least once a week, in order to cut down on attracting predators, rats, and other undesirable creatures that might be attracted to the presence of the hens. Are you familiar with those?
Yes, yeah.
And are any of those problematic for you?
The only thing that I was requesting that was different than what you're proposing is six chickens instead of four, because as a family of four, we eat more, or about to be a family of four, but we would be eating more than the average four hens would lay per week.
And I noticed you've got an especially large lot that really nobody can see into your backyard from anywhere unless they're hiking halfway up from, was it St. Joseph's?
Yes, yeah.
Terrace there. I'll also share with you that I don't believe, we haven't had anyone come in to renew their permit, have we?
To this board, you mean, or that?
At the end of five years.
I don't know that we've seen anybody come back in for renewal, but given the last, I've only been here for five years, and the special use permit applications probably started more, we might be coming up on some of the five years that I'm familiar with.
Pretty, pretty much everyone that I've heard of who gets a five-year special use permit, at the end of the five years, they decide that getting the eggs from someplace else is not bad, wasn't as bad an idea as they thought it was originally, just to tip you off to that. So those conditions would be acceptable to you?
Yes, aside from the...
Other than you want six instead of four?
Yes, sir.
You, you do understand, did I mention that there's no replacement hens?
Yes.
All right. So if you, if we authorize you to have six and one leaves, you're going to have to eat less eggs or supplement them from another source?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yes, just for the record, I did speak to Amy Napier, which is her, I just lost it, which is her neighbor to the, at 105.
East?
East, yeah. And she says she doesn't have a problem with having chickens.
I, I was out there the other day, and there was a car in the carport, there was a car up on the street, and, and nobody answered, but the dog greeted me at the window. Handsome-looking dog.
Oh, thank you.
My concern, and I could only tell by looking over the split rail fence, is the fact that it seems to be way, way down there. And, and having a coop, which looks to be somewhere around 50 feet away from the house, and it's pretty well overgrown back there, that you might have a issue with varmints getting back there, fox, raccoon, because it's easy, easy to hide back there.
Yeah.
And the fact that you're that far away from the house, especially come winter time, I can't imagine treading through deep snow to get back to those chickens.
We do usually anyways, just because we take our dog back there and we don't let him run free. So oftentimes, we're back there with him in the winter or in the summer. The space that we're thinking of doing it, we were going to clear an area out so that it was visible from our house.
Okay. It just seems pretty thick back there, and, and knowing, you know, that it's, you're right behind the flats or right near the flats, or part of the flats, I guess, I'm not sure, but it just seems like there's an awful lot of vegetation and a lot of places for animals to hide. And, and then again, in the wintertime, you know, maintaining, keeping it clean, you know, getting rid of their feces, well, it's going to be hard to maintain. Not that I want it that close to the house either, but it just seems, just the way your yard is built, it looks like it's deeper than your back door, you know, it drops off even farther than your back door.
Yes, yeah, so we have a deck and then stairs that go down, and then it's a relatively flat, level area, and then it goes down further.
Right. And that would be the concern of being able to take care of it. That's my concern.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think, like I said, we're, we're out in the back. That's part of the reason we bought the property is because we really like being out in the backyard in winter or summer, and my daughter plays back there all the time. So I'm relatively optimistic, just based on our behaviors and my upbringing, that that wouldn't be a problem for us to be going there frequently. The other thing is, in the winter with the chickens, we're not going to have electricity there, so we're going to have to be putting water out, warm water for them twice a day. So that'll be making sure that they're safe and comfortable twice a day, check-ins.
Okay. Yeah, that's going to be a hassle.
I'm looking forward to it.
Might be one of the reasons why people don't come back to renew.
Well, again, I...
Time will tell.
Be tough on a normal property, but I'm not that far of a walk, but, okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about chickens or varmints or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman, just wanted to chime in, just as a matter of information for the board. Our current application for zoning variances or zoning board applications on the back has a series of directions and guidance. We have area variance guidance and use variance guidance on there. We don't have anything specific to the special use permit for the harboring of animals, something that we'll look at in the future, either as a separate handout. So at this point, folks that are looking for some guidance only have those things to look at in the back. So that might be one of the reasons. And, and although the factors that we, that are addressed or required to be addressed for an area variance, in some cases, some of the same issues are actually applicable to the special use permit in terms of...
Are the animals the only special, don't we have other special use permits that come up occasional?
You have, I don't know that any that this board has to address. So typically, the special use permits...
It's the chicken board.
Yes. Or the, don't forget, or the...
Goats.
Or goats, or potentially horses.
Yeah, we had those.
So, but it just, for staff, we're going to look at seeing if there's a different, additional handout we can use for these occasions.
All right. That sounds good. Thank you.
Next case on the agenda is case number ZB 1907-3, upon the matter of request by Astrid Rodriguez for area variances to install front yard fencing with less than required front setback exceeding maximum permitted height, linear footage, and non-conforming fence type, and to continue parking a non-conforming commercial vehicle on premises 143 Park Road in an R3 residential district.
Good evening. My name is Astrid Rodriguez, and I reside at 143 Park Road.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'm requesting that I put a white picket fence.
All right, I was going to say, there's two aspects to your application, right?
Yes, I'm going to present the fence one.
I was going to ask, do them one at a time so that we can, all right? So the fence going first is probably a good idea.
Okay. So I got permission from my landlord to request this variance to put a white picket fence in the front of my property, also with moving one of my fences, existing fence, to the property line to have that enough space for my children to play. It is a, a safety issue with my children.
You say that you want to move the fence to the end of your property line, but I guess my question is, it appears from the survey that the fence already goes to the edge of your property line, the chain link fence on the side? Now, I know it stops short of the road.
Yes, so the...
But the distance between, according to the survey map that you attached, the chain link fence on the east and the chain link fence on the west side, and very close to the right-of-way line of Park Road, which is a 50-foot right-of-way, even though only about maybe 15 or 20 feet of it is paved, the town has 50 feet. And where those fences end is the end of your property line.
Correct, sir.
So when you say you want to extend the fences to the end of the property line, they're already there?
No, not extended with a zero...
Mr. Chairman, I think she misspoke.
Oh.
She wants to put a fence across.
I know you want to put it across, but I thought you said you were extending the chain, chain link fence to the property line.
No, the...
Oh, okay.
Yes, that...
Perhaps it was whatever was...
Under survey map that I provided?
Yep.
Over to, if you're holding it this side, right here, my fence is on, is more two feet, one inch on my property. It's not on the property line.
Right.
I would like to...
But it, oh, you're going to move it over?
Yes, to the property line.
Oh, over that way?
Yes, that part of it.
Okay. That's what I misunderstood when you said extending it to the property line. I was thinking of the end.
Yeah, no, it's...
West line, okay, all right.
White picket fence in the front.
The four-foot-high chain link fence, that's what's already there, right?
Pre-existing on this side?
Yeah, four foot?
Correct.
All right. So you just want to move that over to your property line, what's there already?
Correct.
Okay. And then attach a picket fence going all the way across the front, including the driveway, right?
Correct.
All right.
With a gate.
The driveway would have a gate.
Yes, sir.
All right. And that's so that you can keep your kids safe in the front yard, which really is where the most area is for them to play and have playground stuff and that kind of thing.
Correct. On the side is the playground, and in the front, they play.
Okay. Are you going to be replacing the chain links on the side with the picket also? Or are you going to do chain link and then just a one piece of picket across the front?
On this side, I still have not decided. I mean, it would look kind of weird if I did half picket and then chain all the way to the back. I mean, it would look kinda weird if I did half picket and then chain all the way to the back. Regardless, it's have to be put in new, it's, it's not looking nice, it's rusty.
Okay, so one way or another, you're gonna put new, but you haven't decided whether you're gonna go down the whole side with picket? Or the white, the white picket or the chain?
I might just stick to the chain.
Okay. So then you'd bring the chain all the way out to the street or close to, as close to the street as you can? And then just go across the front with the white picket?
Right at the property line, correct, sir.
And then you're gonna have a gate on that, on the driveway?
Yes, sir.
You have a small fence there now, a small little picket fence.
Decorative.
Decorative.
Correct.
Is it gonna be closer to the road than that decorated fence is now?
No, it will not be, um, so I measured and thirty-five point one goes up to that white pick, a little decorative, um, line. And from there, where it allows me, where the property line sits, there is thirteen feet. I have, um, pictures of that. Um, so when I was looking at the, um, the rules and regulations for requesting this. It said that three conditions, it cannot interfere with the snow removal of the sidewalk. We have no sidewalk, so that eliminates itself. It has, it cannot be an ugly fence, in other words, in my understanding, I just can't go pick up a raggedy one and put it up. I'm obviously gonna put, replace a new one there. And then the last requirement was that it cannot interfere with the backing up of other people. Um, from that thirty-five point one to property line, there's actually thirteen feet that extends out.
To the pavement, you mean?
To the, to the street.
To the road, yes, sir.
So, yeah, if you could pass that around, I'd just be curious. So you're basically wanna put the new white picket fence where that decorative fence is now?
Correct.
Only go across the driveway with it?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's gonna connect the two ends of the chain link fence, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that one piece of stockade fence or picket at eight years or the neighbors?
Which one?
About the second section, third section back on your, right here, be over here.
That's the neighbor, that.
Are you gonna be moving that over, they know that?
Um, I really can't talk to them, it, it's just not a good relationship. I, I've tried.
Then it goes stockade further back, so I'm not sure how far back you were going with it, so.
So on the survey map, it comes at an angle. So this part right here up to here, and then it stops right about, I wanna say right here. So just a little bit past the garage.
So I'm not sure whose line is, because you have other fences right up against the chain link fence.
Yes, they just placed that last summer.
Any other questions or comments from the board about the fence part of this application?
Just one in the letter that she got from the owner, it's dated August twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen. So I'm, I'm not sure if, if you've been contemplating this for a while or what?
I, I've been, i- it's not easy, I have a part-time job raising three kids. I could only work so many hours and make so many money, i- it takes time.
If you're, if it was a request by the board, if you could get a, a more up-to-date letter from your landlord, would that be okay?
Yes, um, they're in Ireland right now, they'll be coming back in July fourth.
Lucky them, really.
They're tired, all of us will get there one day.
Board women. Any other questions or comments from the board with respect to the fence part of the application? So let's leave the fence and we'll move to the other part of your application with respect to m- keeping a box truck on the property. Now, when I went there on Sunday, there was no box truck anywhere that I saw, there was a trailer that had a lot of stuff on the trailer that was parked in front of the garage. Is that a substitute for the box truck or is that in addition to the box truck or?
No, that's just my trailer.
Just the trailer, okay.
Yes. So I requested a, a variance for the truck. Um, I first got the notice via text message when I came out the hospital with my daughter. I went home, got ready, came back, um, and I presented my, they gave me this list of the codes and rules and regulations. So I, at the time, had two commercial trucks, I got rid of one. Um, I kept the one that I thought would best fit our family needs. Um, with that being said, they asked for certain things and I gave them to them and I actually brought them here as well. Um, the truck is properly insured and inspected, um, it is considered a box van, that is how it is on the title, that's how it was done on the registration and also insured as a box van. Prior to this, the owner had it as a box van and so on and so forth. We've known the three previous owners before we got it. Um, and it says here that the gross vehicle has to be under ten thousand five hundred. The vehicle per the title, it weighs eight thousand six hundred and seventy-four if, y'all wanna see this. Um, also, it says here, there's only one vehicle per dwelling, so I got rid of the other one, we kept this one. Um, personal use by the occupant of the dwelling unit, my husband does reside there. Um, and then it says with restrictions, dump truck, constructions, it does not fit any of those categories. And then it says for personal vehicles used by handicapped personnel, construction vehicle equipment while activity necessary employed in construction and other real property improvement. Now, my husband does not work for any specific company, he works for himself, he does side jobs and that's all his stuff is in there, is in him provision to have his stuff there so he could do what he's gotta do.
What is the registration of the truck, what, what, uh, GVW, is it a fifty-five hundred, is it sixty-five hundred?
I'm sorry.
It's considered a F, they have it here as a F eighty?
F eighty?
Uh, series, yes.
Okay, so that, that's, um, it's a dual rear wheel, um, heavy duty.
It's a diesel, yes, it's a diesel.
Okay.
Would you?
Do you know how many foot long the box is?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
The width is exactly at ninety-six and the height is seven point five, right on the dot. Two weeks later, when I came back and they called me and then they said I was still in violation. To their own discrepancy, they consider it a freight van?
Yes.
Correct.
I, um, yeah, so I called the DMV and I asked the DMV my questions and in order for us, like, if we were to remodel any type of car or anything, we have to notify the DMV. We're not making no remodeled, remodeling on this, on this box van, it's gonna stay a box van.
Just for the board's benefit, so staff reviewed in, 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 um, addressing the initial code complaint that we classified this particular vehicle either as a prohibited vehicle type under, um, and I'll just get the reference for everybody. Um, two thirty-five dash one oh four point one, section E. And it fits either in as seven, item seven, freight van slash truck. Or si- alternatively, or under, uh, step vans. So in, in, um, the, the way the code enumerates some very specific types of commercial vehicles that are not permitted. Then it has, then for those that are not listed, it does have dimensional restrictions as well. We didn't feel that the dimensional restrictions applied because two of the listed expressly stated prohibited were outlined in the code itself. Um, the, and I know that this is a, it can be a challenging thing because the words are interchangeable, but if you look up the words, you know, freight vans and trucks, you will see things in Google Images that look like lots of different styles and types. But certainly the one, um, that was subject to the, uh, code review was one of them, so.
It's, you know, I, I mean, it, it's, it is a definite freight truck, I mean, it is a, a uh, it's, it's not your typical plumber's van or, uh, you know, regular, uh, uh, delivery van, you know, uh, the flowers or something like that. It is a, it's a heavy duty, full-size, um, truck, or, uh, a cube truck. I, it was there the other day when I went by. It's quite large.
It, it is.
Yep.
It is, it's a diesel.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you could, there are noisy diesel vehicles, um, that aren't as big, but they're still noisy. And I guess as neighbors, we have to accept part of that. I mean, my, my neighbor's got a diesel van, it's not a real big one, but it's diesel and, you know, but it's just the way it is. I mean, I drive a loud car, I mean, I, 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 you know, I understand that part of it. It's more the size and the, uh, uh, you know, the look in the neighborhood that's, uh, probably got certain neighbors, uh, not happy about.
Correct, um, we do live in, uh, Dead End Street, um, across is Seashore Boulevard. And if it's a noise situation, I mean, I was up this morning at five something getting ready to go to work and take my kids and trust and believe there were a lot of freight trucks going by there that I hear. Um, so that's a constant noise, regardless if we're on the opposite side or not. Um, I think that the only thing that if I were on the opposite side that would bother me is the backing up of it. But then again, that's an alarm to notify other people, surroundings, when we're backing it up so no one get hurt.
Sure.
But other than that, we, we we pass inspection, we have everything where it's supposed to be, so it does not make that noise, but unfortunately, it is a diesel truck.
Have you looked into, uh, places to park it, uh, not in your home?
No, um, so.
I mean, there's, I know up on Ridge Road East, there's places that, for commercial vehicles to be parked. Um, where you can rent a spot to park your, you know, your commercial vehicle so that it's not at, at the house, um.
I could look into that, um, I'm still gonna ask to have it parked there. It, in reality, it, it sits there, um, it sits in the back. We try to keep everything clean, so in reality, it's not even in the front. The only time it gets moved forward, if it's one of my other cars needs to be fixed, like just a few days ago, my Malibu had to be fixed, it sounded like a broken Honda. Um, and it was my, um, flex pipe, so we had to move it out so I could put mines in, so my husband could work on it.
Ms., Mrs. Chairman, I'm kinda confused if the dimensions of the vehicle says box van. Um, it's shorter, has a right width, um, and even the use, I'm not sure what the two non-permissible uses are. So if you can clarify that, I appreciate it. Um, then, then when does a box van become a freight truck? That, that's, that's kinda what.
Most box vans are freight trucks.
Okay, so they're, they're interchangeable, um, so how are we defining it by the legal case of what's box and what's?
I think our, our code says that if it's a normal van, which is just a normal-sized stock van that does not have a box on the back of it, or a flatbed or a tow bed or whatever. If it's just a normal length, normal height, style van, like, like Isaac Plumbing would use or um, Time Warner Cable uses some of them, and then they have their bigger trucks also. But your normal-sized van is the way they come standard or stock. These particular vans are sold as cabin chassis and then these boxes or whatever kinda configuration is bolted onto the back. And that's where it becomes a heavier commercial vehicle. They're also heavier duty, they're, you know, your half-ton pickups are what everybody drives every day nowadays. And three-quarter ton pickups are what are used to plow. And then you have one-ton cabin chassis, which they put any types of bodies on the back. And that's when it jumps up into commercial uses and it usually is larger, noisier, wider. You know, dual, dual tires and, and that, and that, that particular truck is even that is actually a larger version of a, of a, of a box truck. I mean, they do sell smaller box trucks.
So this is in the case where the law have to be redefined because the vehicle style has changed? This is just a commercial truck?
This is a commercial truck.
That's also a box van?
Yep, yep.
Council's located for me, section two thirty-five dash one oh four point one. And in it, which applies to commercial vehicles in all, um, residential. I'm sorry. All districts zone for residential use. And it starts off by identifying the zoning districts and then it has general requirements. One of which is that it's by personal use by occupant of the dwelling unit, but going on to subsection E. It prohibits the following vehicle types and it lists, um, dump trucks, construction equipment, trailers, tow trucks, buses, semi-tractors and trailers, step vans, freight vans, trucks, flatbed, stake bed truck, sanitation equipment, those specific types are prohibited. And then, uh, the next category is all other vehicles, if it doesn't fall into one of those specific things that exceed any two of the following dimensions. Overall height of seven and a half feet, body length of, uh, twenty feet and body width of eight feet, so.
So this exceeds height and, um?
Well, she said the height is seven and a half feet and that the length is sixteen feet and that the width is eight feet, so.
Excuse me, the length of the box is sixteen, the, the truck is lar- long, a lot longer than sixteen.
All right, so.
Okay.
She, it appears that the height and the width might not be exceeded. Uh, the length would be, but it talks about two of the following dimensions, any other vehicle exceeding. But that only applies if it's not a specifically listed prohibited use like dump trucks or in this case freight vans, trucks, flatbed, stake, bed truck, step vans, those are prohibited regardless of their dimensions.
Did we say earlier the staff is identified or classified as a freight van?
Uh, correct, we identified it as one of the prohibited types, it seems like two potential could apply here. And so the fact that there were two, more than one, even just one, the presence of one um, being found on that list means it's in a, not a, a permitted type. Um, in this, in this case, we were toying between two and it's a matter of semantics in some cases.
One of the things it's missing from the application is a picture of the vehicle.
I took pictures of the vehicle.
You have them, okay, so you pass those around?
Yeah, so I understand where the lady's coming from, um. But I'm also gonna say that still under DMV law, it is still considered a box van. I understand y'all have y'all rules and regulation, but if I as a consumer have to change something, notify the DMV. DMV belongs to the state, I am, it's considered a box van, I can't change it unless I request it.
The GVW is ten-five.
The GVW is ten-five. So if this vehicle weighs that, then it's without the box on it. So now it weighs that. I mean, you can only carry a thousand pounds. That one can carry more. Could we get copies of those for the, so that we have copies? I don't wanna take our originals out. Okay, good.
I would like to first ask my husband if that's okay, since he's not here.
Well, if you're asking us to rely upon it, then.
Still in consideration to my husband.
Alright, then let me ask you this. If, if we're not to consider that, then, and you want time to talk to your husband about whether we can consider that as part of your application, then you would have to agree to table the application to our next meeting in August and not have the vehicle at the property during that month period of time.
I would have to ask him that and come back to you. Cause I also have to take in consideration the fact that if y'all don't want it on a property and I have to park it somewhere else, that's also costing me money and I'm trying to do this little by little.
Well, I understand all of that. You also have to understand that if you want us to give you time to consult with your husband and consider whether or not we can use something that you're not sure he would allow us to use, then we'll make the deci- we, there are two options then. One is it gets postponed. The other is we decide it tonight. And we don't have that information as part of what's in front of us and it might very well be denied. And if it's denied, you can't come back for at least another year to ask again. So the question is a month versus potentially a year or more.
In my opinion, you could go ahead and make a copy of it. I'm just gonna let him know. And if, if there's an argument and the police get called, well, I can't, I can't avoid it. I just need to let him know that what are your intentions. But y'all could go ahead and make a copy of it.
So just so you know, the material that would be collected for the purposes of the board, there's no reason, it wouldn't need to be maintained in the file permanently because there's personal information here. So I would, we can certainly ensure that it gets shredded once the application has been decided.
I have a question. I guess, do we really need it because we all know what the truck is? The town guys have looked at the truck and they've determined what the truck is. We really don't need to keep copies.
Well, we can read in, I guess we can just read in because in the event that we were to, no matter what we do with the application.
You wanna have the full benefit of the information presented?
There's a four-month or there's a certain period of time. It may not be four months. I'm not sure exactly what it is. But there's a period of time within which somebody could file, if they chose to do so, a court proceeding challenging our decision. And in order for the court to be able to review our decision, the court has to have in front of it everything that we relied upon, which if we're relying upon those things, seemed to me the easiest way was to just have a copy in the file and that would be available to the court. And once the time for challenging whatever decision we might make expired, it, it wouldn't need to be saved anymore. The other thing is we can just read into the record, the parts of it that she wants us to rely on, which is the weight, which I believe shows like eighty-six forty-five.
You're very close, but eighty-six seventy-four, at least according to the title.
And then I heard Mr. LaPerry indicate, cause he knows vehicles.
Vehicles registered at ninety-one something, I believe.
Ninety-one seventy-four.
Ninety-one seventy-four. That includes only the weight of the vehicle. The GVWs is what's required in the, in our town code as a maximum of ten thousand pounds. Well, that vehicle can hold a lot more. They, they, the GVW is the truck itself, the box, and what it holds.
Whatever's loaded into.
So that, that, that truck could drive around with fifteen thousand pounds going down the road. So your GVW is what that vehicle is capable of. And that vehicle definitely falls in the category of not allowed.
Okay.
So even though the weight of it is only ninety-one hundred pounds, it doesn't include what you can stick in. And that's why they go by GVWs, gross vehicle weight inclusive of what's riding in it.
And I would agree with the, with the chairman that you could just read into the record, the information you need. The other option would be if you made a copy, is you could redact any sensitive personal information. But the town should maintain some sort of written record of, of the application, whether it's writ- right into the record or you keep a copy.
Well, Chairman, I would leave it up to you. I'm happy to make.
Why don't we just read it into the record?
Okay. So I'm gonna.
We don't need, we don't need the information about the owner and the address. Just the, read the information about the classification and that descriptive information.
So I'm reading from the certificate of title from New York State. Do you want me to provide the VIN? Yes, no, maybe?
The year, maybe the last six of the VIN. That's how they.
Yeah.
Okay. So last six, oh, now you're gonna make me have to count backwards. Last, can I give you, I'll give you the last five digits of the VIN. Cause then there's a letter before that. Last five digits, excuse me, one, five, eight, zero, three. Year is nineteen ninety-seven. Make is Ford. Model code is F eighty-eight zero. It was issued April first, twenty nineteen. It is a, the listed, it's white. Weight is eighty-six, eight thousand six hundred and seventy-four pounds. Fuel is diesel. It's a six-cylinder.
Just doing a quick Google search of that type of vehicle. That is considered a twenty-six thousand pound GVW.
Okay. And then the registration certificate had.
Nine, ninety-one hundred.
Right. She's gonna read that in as well.
So the cer- the registration certificate states same nineteen ninety-seven Ford with the same VIN. Just to clarify for the, for the record. Expires three twenty-twenty-one. Listed weight is nine thousand one hundred and seventy-four with the diesel six-cylinder.
That describes it as vehicle type what?
Now I feel like I'm taking a test and I'm failing New York State registration, vehicle type.
One of, one of them says van on it someplace.
Bear with me. Oh, van. Yes, correct. It says van.
Okay. And then there's a insurance certificate that matches the same VIN number.
There is a, a insurance, proof of insurance, and the insurance is good until next year.
Okay.
Just, just so you're aware, the difference between the registration weight and the title weight is probably the box itself.
Box. That's what I thought.
The title comes with just a cabin chassis.
Right. Okay.
Here's how they do those, just so you, you know, when you buy that vehicle, you have a weight of the vehicle inclusive of everything on it. The person that registers it can go up to the max GVW that it'll carry. And then they have to pay accordingly that registration. A lot of people will not register the full capability of the truck. Hence the fact that that's only got ninety-one hundred pounds on it. Cause they're paying less for the registration.
So it's ninety-one hundred pounds empty.
Well, it's, no, technically it could be eighty, the eight thousand some pounds empty. But they registered it with another five hundred. So in other words, if they were to get pulled over at the state DOT checkpoint and they had more than five hundred pounds in that truck, the registration only shows ninety-one hundred. If they had two thousand pounds and they weighed the truck, they'd get a ticket because they'd be overweight.
That's what those weigh stations are.
Exactly. So.
See, it all comes together.
You know, if you're not, if you're.
Learn something new every day.
I'm sorry.
I would like to talk into that and respect to that.
You'll have a minute.
Okay.
But people do it all the time. It's not, you know, because you're not always driving it around with a full load. So you're driving it around sometimes empty or a lot of times empty. So you don't, why pay for the extra if you don't utilize it? Again, only when you get pulled over is when it could be questionable how much weight you're carrying. Go ahead.
So when I went to go insure this truck, there was a lot of debating on it. If we could insure it with the same insurance, if we could have it in the multi so we could get the altogether price. Over at Free Bray on Lake Avenue, Miriam talked to her supervisor. And the only way for us to insure it is to have that ninety-one. We didn't choose the weight. They chose for us in order for us to register it. So.
In doing that, they did that so that your insurance would be less.
Oh, yeah. That insurance wasn't, that wasn't cheap.
Well, but I mean, you know, if.
Might've been less than it would've been otherwise.
If you would've given it a full load and, and most people don't do the max weight capacity because they don't wanna pay for it. The only ones that really worry about it are the over-the-road heavy truckers because they'll get, they'll get a ticket for it.
And, and we're not worried about it. I mean, it's used for personal use and when my husband steps out to go do his side jobs and.
Okay. You know, again, that's why the difference, the, the, the big question is the truck itself is definitely capable of the weight. And it also falls into the category in our, in our rules that it's, it's too big.
Alright. Any other questions or comments from the board? Does the applicant wish to say anything more with respect to that aspect of your application?
Do I have to respond to this that I just got today?
Oh, that's the, the letter that came from a neighbor?
Yes.
You're welcome to address it if you'd like.
Or do I get to address it?
For purposes of the record, the board received copies of an email today that was sent on Saturday, June twenty-ninth. And it's from a resident at two eleven Park Road, who indicates that he objects to the variance being granted. The truck in question is a large box-type truck. The truck sounds like a locomotive going down the road. The man that drives the truck uses it for junk scrap metal. He goes up and down the road dozens of times a day and night using this truck and other vehicles he has. Our road is a dead-end road. He has to go by my house to get in and out of the street. The noise from this is unbearable. Our street only has houses on one side. The other side in front of our houses is Duran Park. This is quite a peaceful street when those, these vehicles are not going up and down the road dozens of times a day. He goes on to make other observations which are not relevant to, to the application. He indicates that he's a retired county sheriff's deputy and residents bring their concerns to him. That the truck is a constant concern to the neighbors on the street. And he's asking that we deny the request for a variance based on the fact that this vehicle and others like it have no place in a residential neighborhood because of the problems that they cause. So that's the, that's the content of his letter that's relevant to the application. The other comments that he made in there are, are not relevant and have nothing to do with the application.
So it says here that the man that drives the truck uses it for junk scrap metal. I believe when Joseph in Tenny, I'm sorry, had went by, what I use, what we use to recycle is my trailer. We are not gonna take a big diesel truck in the middle of the night or during the day so early in the morning. And it was full. I just scrapped a couple of things that I had laying around the house and I got reimbursed for it. I'd rather junk it, scrap it, however you wanna put it, instead of going into the landfill. If it could be reused and recycled, so will be it. It continues to say here that the other side of the front of our house is Duran Park, like I stated before. If it's an issue of the noise, I understand, but also taken consideration, there are lots of trucks that go by there and we're here at any time during the day and night. It says here as well that you said it didn't apply. But it says here, I am a retired Monroe County Sheriff's Deputy and several residents bring their concerns to me. I'm a little bit saddened that a retired Monroe County Sheriff only knows one version and not two. I studied law and criminal justice and I graduated at the top of my class. And there's always two sides of the story and he's only looking at it from one point of view. I have never met him in person. I see him here and I can't even recognize him. But I think putting that into the letter is kinda using your background and where you came from to just put more to it than it is. Also, it says here, the one forty-three is a rental property and this bring all problems that rentals are known for. That's stereotyping. Not everybody that rents.
You'll notice that I didn't read that part because that's one of the parts of the letter that I felt didn't pertain to the vehicle application and therefore it's gratuitous and irrelevant.
Okay. Then it also says here that he goes up and down the road dozen of times a day and night using this truck and over the vehicle and other vehicle he has. First of all, I work for Catholic Charities Community Center. My schedule based, based on my children's schedule. Sometimes I start early, but since I work with disability adults, disabled adults, sometimes my job do run into that problem where my husband does have to go pick up the kids. He does not pick up the kids on that truck. That truck was just bought this year. That truck sat for a good time. The pieces on that truck are very, very expensive. We've gone to different areas to go buy pieces. The truck just got started back again. One of the problems that we ran into it and it was sitting for like about maybe two weeks without making a sound is that it does require two batteries. And with requiring two batteries, it requires this specific device that is basically, how I could describe it because I don't know the proper name to it. It has two terminals and a specific wire that has to have a certain amount of amp and then it's connected. It has another terminal. There's a negative and there's a positive. We went to Napa. We went everywhere. Everybody said, go to the dealer. You're gonna have to request it. I refuse to go to the dealer because the dealer are very more, more expensive. Regardless, the truck was sitting. So, I mean, I sit here in front of all of y'all and gotta be my witness. That's a complete lie. The truck has been parked more times than it has been taken out because of the situation of making sure that it is up to date in code. And we do not scrap in it. We scrap in our, I have a Yukon with a trailer.
Anything else that you wanted to say to address this application?
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll open the hearing to public input. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this application?
Hi, my name's Michael Greenhagen. I live at one thirty-seven Park Road.
The, only the applicants and their representatives are sworn because only the, the public input comment section is for the board to consider as policy considerations. The applicant's information is what we rely upon in deciding yes or no. And we've encountered a situation several years ago where we learned after granting an application that a lot of the information that we relied upon in granting the application turned out to be inaccurate at best and false at worst. And we, there was no remedy available to us to rectify that because nothing was said under oath. So the applicants and their representatives are placed under oath so that there are repercussions if the information they provide has misled the board. We did in that case revoke what we had, had approved. But there was no other penalty, if you will, for giving us inaccurate information. So that's why we swear and the, but the people who come to speak here exercising the rights that we've had for two hundred and forty-three years now that, you know, so we don't ask the, those during the public input portion to be sworn. So go ahead.
Uh, thank you. So I've lived in my residence for twenty-nine years. I've had five children go through our district. The fences in question that are butted up against the chain link fence are mine and they are, I did have a permit to put those up. I just wanted more of an information on the fencing and what you wanted to do, the first part of this. As long as it does not impede my property, I don't have a problem with it. The second part of this is the truck. Okay? As you know, most of you've driven down that road and the houses are very close together. One thing that you have not brought up is the actual fumes from the diesel of the engine itself. Okay? I cannot, I live maybe twenty feet away from her house on. I cannot, I live maybe twenty feet away from her house on that side of her driveway. Um, I cannot have my windows open on that side of the driveway because of the fumes of the truck when it starts. Okay, um, I have children, I have a grandchild. Um, I, I just, and if you look and if I, I have a picture of it, if I walk out my back door, I turn to the left and I see this big truck. That's all I see is this truck. Um, and I, I definitely oppose, uh, having that truck in that, in, in, on her property. Other than that, you guys sounded like you deliberated enough on that, so that's all I have right now.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone here who would like to talk to us about some aspect of this application? Be it fencing, commercial vehicles, whatever. Seeing none, oh, I'm step right up, sir.
Hi, I'm Rick Baum and I live at one seventeen Park Road. And I just had some questions. I need some understanding of some terms.
Okay.
Uh, what is required front setback?
The required setback is the distance from the property line in the front of the house to the foundation line of the house and it's the distance that's supposed to be there.
Okay, and, uh.
So if you want to build, if you're, if you've got a vacant piece of parcel, piece of land and you want to put up, uh, a structure on that land, the minimum required setback says that you have to start from the edge of the property line, not the edge of the road, the edge of the property line and go back that number of feet to start and then the building or the structure can go further back, but it can't come closer to the road than that.
Okay, and so in this case, that's satisfied. I mean, that's not in violation of less than required front setback. Does that mean it's? It's, uh.
Yes, normally the, normally the fences have to be set back three feet from the property line. But in this case, she's asking us to allow her to connect at the property line from where the two chain link fences end, which is a distance of, according to her measurement, approximately thirteen feet back from the edge of the pavement.
I'm still confused, okay.
The variance would be about three, would be three feet. Because the minimum setback for a fence being three feet from the property line in front, she would have to set it back three feet from the ends of the fences, the, the side fences that are there now. They end according to the survey at the front property line of the property. So, to satisfy the setback requirement, the fence would have to be located three feet further back from the fence posts on the east and the west side. That would be the setback. She's asking us to allow her to have it at the property line, which is a variation of three feet.
Okay, my other question is non-conforming commercial vehicle.
That's what we've been discussing about what the town requirements are and the fact that the truck, uh, it was determined by the, uh, town not to conform to the requirements that are set forth in the ordinance, which are what was, what I read about the vehicles that are prohibited and then other vehicles, if it's not one of those that, uh, exceed two of the three dimensions that were set out in the statute.
And, and so is it in violation right now?
It is, and what she's asking, the, we handle variances. Variances are, are, uh, exceptions that are allowed because when zoning ordinances are created, they impose restrictions on property owners' abilities to use their property. And in, in some instances, the restrictions that apply all across a municipality uh, create a hardship for particular owners based perhaps on the size of the lot, the shape of the lot, uh, where the lot is located, uh, and some of the times the, um, the hardship can be alleviated by giving an exception that isn't harmful to the neighborhood and which satisfies five factors that the courts have identified, uh, that we use regularly in making our determinations to determine whether or not there's a practical hardship for an area variance. Now, for a use variance, in other words, if she wanted to open up a delicatessen in her house, that would be a, a prohibited use in the residential district. That would require a use variance, which has a much, uh, stricter, uh, standard for, of requiring, uh, uh, before we can, can do that. So those are the differences and when it says non-conforming, uh, use, that's what brings her here, is that the town has said to her, look, we don't think this vehicle conforms with the statute. If you want to keep it, you have to come to the zoning board and see if they'll give you permission to keep it. That's a variance.
Okay, and how much footage from the edge of the road? Like coming up the front yard towards the house is the town's?
Thirteen feet, well, from the edge of the pavement to the fence, her property line, according to her measurement is thirteen feet. The survey doesn't measure it because the survey, the surveyor just says, this is, this line is where her property ends and there's a fifty-foot town right of way ahead of that. So, anywhere in that fifty feet, the town can put the pavement.
Okay.
So if the town decided they wanted to make that a forty-foot road, they would have enough room to do it. And, you know, they'd go within that fifty-foot range. They have the, but you still have to mow it and rake up all the leaves that are in the right of way and all that, clear the snow.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else who'd like to talk to us? Ma'am, you're gonna get, you get the chance at the end of the public input, as I said earlier, to come up and address anything that was discussed during the public input portion, so you're welcome to join us again.
With the issue of trying to move, relocate the fence to the property line, according to this document that was certified and it was approved by the town of Aronde Coy, it states here that my fence is two point one feet in my property, not on the property line.
We're not. I'm talking about the property line at the north end of your property. You're talking about two point one feet on the west side of your property.
Yes.
So, we're talking apples and oranges. I'm talking north, you're talking west.
Yes, but I'm just responding to, uh, my neighbor's, um, statement.
He was just asking what that meant, minimum required setback.
No, 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 not, um, the gentleman before, my direct neighbor, I believe is Mr. Greenhagen?
Yeah, he said he didn't have a problem with wherever he wanted to put the fence.
No, not the front one. I'm talking about that he said that he got a permit to put his fence up.
His stockade fence?
Yes, his stockade fence. His stockade fence, even if he got, did get a permit, it's in violation. It's on my property.
That, you're talking.
Where I want it.
You're, let me explain something. We, you're talking what's shown on an instrument survey map that was done in connection with the purchase of the property, probably. Alright, and the town gives a permit that says you're able to put up a fence. Where you put the fence, if it's, is up to you and if you go over a property line, that's not a town issue, that's a property neighbor issue.
Oh, then I was misled by Ms. Donna because she told me that if the person next to me were to put their fence on my property, then that was a violation. That's what I was told upstairs when I put this in.
I'll just, just interject here. I don't think that that's something that this board can address at this point because it's not the subject of the, the area variance, so.
Well, they told me to put a variance. They charged me an extra fifty dollars to relocate that fence to the property line.
So the, I think the issue in question is the chain link fence that's shown on your property, does that belong, that belongs to your property?
Correct.
And it just was not installed as close to or on the property line as it could have been?
Correct.
When it was installed originally?
Correct.
Yeah, so you're seeking a variance to relocate your fence two feet over, so it is on the property line?
Correct.
This has nothing to do with the neighbor, any fence that the neighbor installed is not the same fence. He wasn't speaking about this particular fence, I don't believe.
I understand he was speaking about his fence and I'm just thinking, okay, with what Donna was helping me with, because Donna upstairs helped me with this. And she told me, well, if his fence is on your property, it's a violation. And I, I understand he has his fence there and I understand he got a permit, but she told me that I had to pay extra to get the variance just to move it, so is that gonna be a problem?
No, I think we're having two issues here. When fences are installed with or without a permit, preferably for those viewing at home with a permit, otherwise it becomes a code vi- a code complaint issue. Um, when fences are installed, um, permits given and said on the property line. However, unfortunately, in the field, when fence companies are putting up fences, the, if you're off by six inches or a foot in the installation, that can, um, result in the fence being on the neighbor's property. Typically, how this is handled is that when the property, um, is, uh, put up for sale or there's a disposition, in other words, a sale takes place. Um, this is where the lawyers earn their money and there's, uh, either an agreement that's signed, um, some kind of a release so that you acknowledge that some, your neighbor's fence is partially on your property and you indicate that that's not a problem for now or you come to some other resolution, but there are ways of handling that when the property, um, is put up for sale.
Okay.
Let me just clarify something. Your property, if I'm reading the survey correctly, is surrounded on three sides by a chain link fence that is part owned by your property, right?
Mm-hmm.
Right. If you look at the survey map, on the left side, on the west side, you're looking at two point one feet inside your property of that fence, okay? But on the east side, if you look, your fence is nine tenths of a foot on your neighbor's property at the road.
Correct. I, I spoke with my, um, neighbor and I asked her about it. She said that she, she was okay with the fence being there.
Here's what happens. A long time ago, back in the seventy, early eighties it was, when prior to that, when people bought and sold property, the surveyors prepared what were known as instrument tape location maps. They were not surveys. And people relied upon those to put in fences. And when the mortgage companies started requiring instrument surveys in the mid-eighties, we found that there were all kinds of fences and driveways and shrubs and gardens and edges of houses and things that weren't on the property line. Because the surveyors defined the property line exactly and the tape location map was like somebody's best estimate of where it was. And when we started increasing the accuracy of the surveys, we started finding all kinds of problems with fences and everything else. So, it's not that anybody put that fence in intending to take property from somebody else or to give away property. It's just, that's where they thought the property line was when they put that fence in. That fence is more than forty years old. You can tell by looking at it.
And can I add one other point? And the only reason you needed variance to move that particular section of fence over is because the existing, what's considered pre-existing non-conforming extends too far out to your property line. So you could have gotten just a building permit and it doesn't, and it doesn't meet the fence type that's permitted in the front yard. So that was installed at a time where the regulations may not have, may not have existed. Um, and so now, in order to move or replace, in this case, the fence, um, and to keep it in, at the type and the distance that you want, you, we couldn't issue a building permit to allow continuation or of an, of a non-conforming condition. So that's why you have no choice. Um, when somebody installs a fence on the wrong side of a property line or a little bit too far over, that's not a, that's not a zoning violation or that's not a, an act that has to be corrected with a variance. You can't rebuild a non-conforming fence type or location without the variance. Same way as if somebody had a, a porch that was non-conforming and they wanted to replace it, we would have to have them get the variance first before they could install the replacement porch. We can't issue building permits when the condition doesn't conform. Okay?
And then to the other respect as to the commercial vehicle and the fumes, New York State requires that there is certain things that a car needs to have. I don't know the proper name of it, but it does have to do with fumes and stuff. I believe it's the cadillac converter?
Cadillac converter.
Cadillac converter, which in order to pass inspection, it has to have a cadillac converter. And it did pass inspection because it does have it, so it is following the DMV rules as to minimize the fumes and stuff. Um, that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the hearing with respect to that case and move on to the next case on our agenda.
Next item for board action is a table application. It's case number ZB one nine zero six dash two. Upon the matter of request by Nisi Packard for a special use permit to harbor four Hanswith coop pursuant of section two thirty-five dash seventy of town code on premises seven sixty-two Titus Avenue in an R one residential district. Good evening. My name is Nisi Packard and I reside at seven sixty-two Titus Avenue.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry I wasn't present. The last hearing, I was actually in the emergency room, spent a few days in the hospital.
We understood that. That's why we all gathered here again today. Glad to see you're doing better.
Yes, much better, thank you.
So, you want to have forehens in your backyard. When we were here, um, last month, several of your neighbors expressed concerns about the location of the coop and the fact that, um, chickens draw rats.
Correct.
And.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, can we do a motion first to remove it from the table?
Oh, sure. I'll make a motion that we remove this, uh, application from the table.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. We are fully constituted.
Thank you.
Picking up where I left off, your neighbors expressed some concerns about the location of, of the coop right next to the driveway as opposed to being further back in the yard, like alongside the, the, to the east of the garage. And then there was concern expressed about, uh, chickens drawing rats, uh, to the neighborhood. Um, and it was mentioned that a neighbor of yours at seven eighty Titus has chickens. Uh, we haven't seen them yet, so if they're watching tonight or their neighbors are watching, they might want to put in a word to them that perhaps they should come and see us for the special use permit as well.
They're not actually there anymore. They were removed.
Okay.
Um, when Mike Nolan took down the Ver Cruz's old greenhouses, rats came into their, that area.
Okay.
And then those, those chickens in that rooster are removed.
Okay, good. They had a rooster too? Oh, no wonder the neighbors were complaining. Alright, um, so, and, you know, as I've mentioned before, when we go to training and we have training for zoning board members, they talk about area variances and they talk about use variances and they talk about special use permits and, and what they're all about, but nobody tells us about chickens. Or goats, or pigeons, horses, or any other, other animals that under the town code they have sent to us for us to be, to figure out. So we, we do our best and over the years, we've learned a lot. And in addition to chickens attracting rats, we've also learned that bird seed attracts a lot of rats, perhaps more than chickens.
And dog food.
And dog food. And, um, so what we've, were you here earlier when I went with the earlier applicant over the conditions?
I was.
Alright, and I, as I recall from your application, you addressed all those because you were familiar with those.
Yes, the, so the, um, house that I, I purchased and my handyman built has a raised coop that can be locked where the feed will be at all times. It won't be scattered on the ground, um, which my neighbors had done. Um, it was just kind of scattered, but if it's kept in a feed inside the coop where it's less likely it's not on the ground level to attract predators, predators are less likely to be there.
Feed that's in the coop is the feed that they're eating, right?
Correct, and it's in this long container with holes in it that they can peck through.
I mean, I can't imagine that you go every day to buy what they're gonna eat that day.
No, I have.
Have a storage.
Yes.
Alright, and where's that?
So the storage is, um, right before my deck. There's an addition that was put down in nineteen sixty-one. It's an unheated room with a sliding glass door. Um, I have the bag of feed in there.
So it's inside.
And I was requested that it should go into a container, so I bought, um, a container. So I bought a container with a tightly closing plastic lid to prevent any odors from it and to make it more difficult if any, but anything did get into that porch room, then it, it, it's less likely to attract it, cause it's not an open bag sitting there.
But it's not sitting out in the yard?
No.
Okay. And the location of the coop. Are you willing to move the coop down further in the yard so that it's like next to where the garage is?
Um, the garage is at a slant right now and I will probably, yeah. I will probably be fixing that.
The west.
It is. It was when I bought the property. I think the fence is actually holding it up. I would have to have somebody take apart the coop and move it. I just put a pond in actually next to the garage over the weekend. So I could move it someplace else. I could move it behind the garage, which I think that the neighbor who complains about it, all the other neighbors constantly, I think she would have more of a problem if she could see it. And that's why I kind of chose that location, because it's my, my driveway, then the fence, then the coop, and then my back deck. So it's close to my home, but it's out of her sight unless she's peeking between the fence slats.
Her concern was that it was located close by her window, as I recall and.
Chickens make less noise than the birds flying overhead, but.
My experience is they make less noise than the dogs in the neighborhood.
And there's quite a few of those.
Yeah, I'm sure.
I, I don't think, I think some of the neighbors had, had worried about the fact that the backyard wasn't overall kept.
Yes, I've addressed that completely. Actually, my next door neighbor who bedroom window is right there, called the health department while she knew I was in the hospital and I had a cast on my right hand for seven weeks. So I, my husband died last July and I really just stopped work on the yard at that point. My father was ninety-four. He passed away Thanksgiving. And so I, the house has been sold to Mike Nolan to become part of I Square. So it, they lived there sixty-two years and never threw away anything. So it took me from that time until, oh, early May to get it all cleared out, to go through all the paperwork. And that was my focus, because the house had to be sold, because there was a lien on the property. So as soon as I was able to, I started working on there. Mary called, the next door neighbor, Mary, called the health department and Dan Dool came down. And I had already started and got about half of it done. There was rag, ragweed up against her fence. It was about two feet tall. And that was the first thing I pulled up. The only tall things there are mint that's come over from her yard into my yard. And Dan came back last week. He's closed the case. He told me I did a fantastic job of getting it cleared out. And that was the concern, because my focus was on getting my dad's house and his estate settled. That was my, had to be my priority.
Again, the, the couple of the neighbors were here and they objected because there's neighbors behind that had issues. I guess there's a street back.
Hedgegarts is behind me. I've never met those neighbors.
Somebody had, uh, might've had chickens back there also.
They had, that was behind the people at, that don't have them anymore. She was the neighbor who complained when they had rats.
Right. And, and, you know, it is a concern. There was one house over on Daly Boulevard in Seneca. Person lives on the corner, the neighbor one in had chickens. And eventually the rats started coming and, you know, it had to be addressed. If they're kept right and proper, it was usually not a problem. But if it's kept, not kept properly and you're, you're allowed to let food drop on the ground or if their droppings drop on the ground, the rats are gonna come.
I understand that. I, I'm a social worker and I used to do home visits in not so great parts of the city. And one of the main reasons I stopped doing it was being surprised by rats, cockroaches, and then bedbugs. And I really despise rats. That's the last thing I want on my property. My grandkids are over. I have five grandkids and they're over all the time. The last thing I want is one of them getting bitten by a rat. I don't want a rat in my home. That makes the hair on my arms stand up just thinking about it. It's disgusting. And I would not, not allow that. It, if you have been over, stop by again. The yard's all mowed. I had started in the front, you know, planting there. Went around the back when I started working, but I'm right-handed. Cast was on my right hand. So I, took me a little bit, probably twice as long with my left hand. I found some tools to help me accommodate the disability, you know, at the time. And it's still kinda swollen. It takes a bit longer to get things done.
Were the, were the chickens on vacation while this month?
They are. They're in Palmyra at my, one of my lifespan colleagues who has chickens and goats.
You mentioned that you just put a pond in next to the, to the garage.
It's about the size of the podium. It's a small pond with koi fish. Very tiny.
Alright. So because according to the survey, I'm guessing you've got about thirty feet between, between the garage and the fence on the east side.
Okay, yeah.
Would it be possible to move the coop down in the area where when you come down the steps off the deck, it would be back to the, as you're facing it, be to the right of the pond and be in that distance, at least four feet from the fence, but still in there?
So like in the middle of my backyard?
Yeah.
Um, my kids, my grandkids play there. So, you know, I, that would be hard. Behind the garage, I have a, a large vegetable garden.
Okay.
So it, I, I could move it. It would be difficult. I mean, I would, it would have to be taken apart and put back together.
And then I saw that you have the board on board fencing, so at certain angles, it's visible.
I would be more than happy to change the fencing and actually there's chain link between her and I and I was going to apply to, to put board fencing up there.
What I was thinking of is if you put some kind of a, a cloth or some like.
I'd be more than happy to.
Or a tarp or something over the boards, so that looking through, you wouldn't even see the chickens there.
Absolutely. Be more than happy to do that. I could do that tomorrow.
Uh, um, Chairman?
Yes.
Sorry. I'm not sure if that would be a code compliance issue. Typically, when folks have fencing, I'm not sure if they're allowed to have any material hanging over it. So I would just, certainly as a temporary solution, I, but I would want.
Attacking it up on the inside of the fence.
I would, I would want, I would wanna double check the, the, the requirements. I apologize for.
Alright. Well, not every idea that I come up with is.
Or could boards be placed where it's board on board on the interior of the fence?
Um, yeah, that could certainly, if that was a, that could.
Something that could happen right, probably pretty quickly.
That would make it like a solid stack eight fence.
Correct, on the interior.
That would be absolutely acceptable. I could have it done fairly quickly.
Cause part of what we're charged with in doing the special use permit is to minimize the impact of these uses on neighbors. So what we heard was they were concerned about rats, so we're addressing that with cleaning the, uh, uh, keeping the food inside, not having it distributed around the yard, clean, keeping the coop clean. And, you know, the, another complaint, that helps address and discourage, or not encourage, I should say, rats. And then the visibility issue of the neighbor, if the fence is solid, then, then that takes that away. And so that minimizes the impact on the neighborhood, okay?
Thank you.
That's why we're asking these things.
Yes, and my other neighbor on the other side, Paulette Brown, I'm surprised. I talked to her husband and I, and I thought she was coming. She actually, being a good neighbor, offered to come over and, you know, help me mow or do anything, cause I had the broken hand and I had been sick. So it was nice.
What I reviewed earlier with the previous applicant tonight. You're okay with not replacing the hens for a five-year period?
Yes, sir.
You're okay with limiting it to four hens and no roosters?
Correct.
You're okay with submitting a veterinary health certificate every year?
Correct.
You're okay with having the coop and run at least four feet from the property lines?
Correct.
You're okay with the digging the two-foot barrier into the ground to prevent animals from burrowing into the coop?
I am.
Alright. And you're okay with the town staff conducting inspections of the property on an annual basis without any prior notice?
Absolutely.
And you're also okay with making sure that you take additional care to keep it clean and store the food appropriately?
Correctly.
Okay.
Correct.
Alright. Anybody have any other questions or comments?
Well, unfortunately, I, I didn't go back out to the house this, this past month. And I'm, I'm a little disappointed. I'm wondering if, had anybody gone back out to take a look?
You did?
Yeah, looked. I didn't see anything that looked, you know, dramatically inappropriate or unkept. Okay, cause the first time I was there, it was.
Yeah, I hadn't actually gone back the first time, so your observations are what prompted me to go back this time.
Okay. Had anybody else gone to look this month or no? So just from the first month? You know, it was a concern. It was a concern that it was already done. You know, the coop was there before. The chickens were there before. And, and obviously, none of the neighbors were happy about it.
Actually, my neighbors were not aware of it until they got the postcard in the mail. They weren't even aware they were there. But I, I found out that, I had lived in, I grew up in Orondequay and I went to school there, but I lived for about fifteen years in Shortsville, Ontario County. And I had chickens in town, right next to the fire hall where I lived. And there was no permit. And because the neighbors had them, that no longer have them, I didn't realize, I didn't look up the zoning code until after. And then I looked it up, gave away two of the six, because the state says you need to buy six. And then immediately came down and applied for the permit. I wanna do the right thing. So I realized I had done something I shouldn't have. Can't return chickens once you buy them, so I applied for the permit and tried to correct my, my error.
Every municipality has different regulations. The city has no restrictions, as I understand it, on chickens. So if you lived on the south side of Longacre Road, you could have a dozen chickens roam around your backyard. So, you know, here, it's a little different. We allow it, but we ask for conditions.
Right. And that's why I corrected it and, and I'm trying to follow the conditions that.
But yeah, no, the, the yard looked fine and, you know.
Cause I know when, when I was there, it was quite overgrown and the neighbors were very worried about it.
I had been sick for a while, so.
Gotcha. Just for those watching, once again, it is much preferable from our vantage point to ask us first about having the coop and where it's gonna be located, than to put it in and then come to us and say, can I keep it? So we appreciate the fact that for the last month, the chickens have been vacationing in.
Palmyra.
Palmyra, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about chickens or hens or coops or fencing or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. And we will be in recess for till five of, five of nine. Hastings Lane's still here, yes. One fifteen Valley View Crescent, yes. Um, one forty-three Park Road, yes. And seven sixty-two Titus Ave, so we're gonna go through the cases in the order they appear on the agenda because everybody is still here. So, the first, uh, case that we, uh, have on the agenda pertains to one sixty-two Hastings Lane. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion for Hastings Lane, one sixty-two Hastings Lane. Um, I will make a motion that we approve the, uh, the variance. Um, I don't believe it'll affect the environmental, um, concerns of the neighborhood. I don't believe that it'll affect the character of the neighborhood. It is a self-created issue. Um, because obviously they wanna have a little larger garage. Um, but based on the criteria, I believe that if we stay to his original request, um, which I believe is the thirteen point four variance, uh, with twenty-five, uh, actually twenty-five point six feet request of the variance. Um, uh, if we stay that way and not make it larger than he, uh, had talked about, um, that we should approve it that way. Um, if that made any sense.
So basically, your motion is to approve it as submitted?
As submitted, yes.
I'll second it.
Any, uh, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we are fully constituted. Next, uh, application, uh, in front of us is one fifteen Valley View Crescent. Uh, this is also a type two action for secret purposes. Uh, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application? And I'll make a motion that we approve the, uh, special use permit, grant the special use, uh, permit with, uh, the following conditions. That, uh, the length, the permit will be in effect for a period of five years during which there will be no replacement, uh, hens. The, uh, applicant will be limited to six hens and no roosters. Applicant will be required to submit annually to the town a veterinary health certificate with respect to each of the animals. The coop in the run will be at least four feet from the property lines. The fence barrier will be dug two feet underground to prevent animals from burrowing in or out of the coop. Uh, the applicant will allow town staff to conduct an inspection of the property on an annual basis without prior notice. And the applicant will, um, clean the, uh, cage at least weekly, the coop at least weekly, maintain, uh, it in a clean and sanitary condition, and will not store, uh, food for the animals, uh, outside. And they will be in a, an appropriate, uh, container. Does anyone wish to second that motion?
Second.
My question is, uh, the four hens versus six hens, we've usually only approved four.
She's asked for six for the reasons that she wants more eggs than four hens can produce in a week. And she has property of in excess of an acre. Uh, and there's no, there really is no neighbors. Unlike the other applications that we've had in the past where there's, uh, houses on all sides. That's not the case here, so, uh, given the extra room, I thought that two additional hens for that period wouldn't be, uh, unreasonable.
I, I second. Um, again, uh, this property obviously is the right size to do this. Um, I do have a large concern about her being able to get in the backyard and take care of them.
Well, that's part of why we have the town inspection.
Right, uh, I, I just hope that it's, it works out.
So do I. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna say nay on that.
Okay, any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, one opposed, and we are still fully constituted. I stood six in favor, right? No abstentions. All right, the next application before us is pertains to one forty-three Park Road. This is actually two applications. Uh, for the first, uh, application is for a, uh, area variance for the front yard, uh, fencing with less than required front setback exceeding maximum prohibited height, prohibited, permitted height, linear footage, and non-conforming fence type. So, with respect to that, that's a type two action for, uh, secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to that application?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, um, the first part of the application, um, being that, um, to, to approve. Um, it's, 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 uh, to approve the application, uh, as requested. Uh, I don't think that it will change the character, uh, of the neighborhood. And, um, and I think it'll improve the, uh, overall situation, safety for the kids. And is there anything else I need to cover on that one?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
My only question is, okay, and I'm all for what she wants to do for the kids. That if she's gonna move the fence and, you know, the letter said picket fence, nothing about moving it. Should the owner know that?
Yeah, I think, I think we're talking about two different fences. Um, I think in the discussion, there's the east and west fence, um, which is irregular.
She's just doing the front and it's all we have to worry about that.
What, Matt?
You bring up a good point, and let me interject. We talked early on about the fact that there's a letter in here from the owner of the property that's more than two years old, that we get an updated letter before we give her the permit.
Or you could make it conditioned upon the town receiving an updated letter in support of the application. So the board could render a decision and have one of the conditions be that an updated letter from the, um, owner of the property be submitted at the time of application to, for the building permit.
I'm in my, um, my motion to include that, that statement. What I'm doing is, uh, writing an updated letter of consent to be received by town from property owners prior to issuance of permit.
Correct. The, the, that, these variances include moving the metal fence to the property line on the, uh, west end of the property. And then also including a white picket fence along the front property line going across the driveway.
Right. Which is gonna have a gate.
Yes.
For the drive.
I think that we agree that where it goes is not issue this board.
Where the gate goes?
And where the side fence goes.
Right, yeah. All right, any other questions or discussion, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, the board is fully constituted. The next aspect of this application relates to the request for a variance to allow for continued parking of a non-conforming commercial vehicle on the same property. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to that application?
I'll make a motion that we deny, um, the applicant's application, uh, after further review. Uh, it is a, considered a freight truck and non, and not legal by town code. Uh, so therefore, an alternative method should be found to park the vehicle and use it. And that's, um, simply a restriction of the definition of the vehicle. Uh, the gross vehicle weight, um, according to the law that the town has set for it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, we are fully constituted. Next case is the application pertaining to seven sixty-two Titus Avenue. This is a type two action for secret purposes. Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll, I'll move that we grant special use permit. With the, um, typical or usual conditions that we impose on special use permits, limiting the number of hens to four. Uh, should I list them all?
No, I think we're, Michelle, you're familiar with what they are.
All right. I think the, the only one that's issues is the number of hens in it.
Right.
That's four.
That's limited to four. Oh, the. Yeah, for the record, I'll read them in. The no replacement hens during a five-year period, uh, limited four hens and no roosters, uh, submission of annual veterinary certificates, health certificates for each of the, uh, of the hens. The coop in the runner to be at least four feet from property lines. Uh, there's to be a fence barrier dug two feet underground to prevent animals from getting into or out of the coop. Uh, the applicant will allow the town staff to conduct an inspection of the property on an annual basis without prior notice. The applicant is to keep the, uh, coop in a clean and sanitary condition and store food in an indoor, uh, area with, uh, appropriate, uh, containers to reduce the, uh, odors and attraction, uh, of undesirable animals. Uh, and then the applicant also has agreed to, um, in the area of the coop to make the fence a solid, uh, fence instead of with gaps of board on board in that area between, um, the coop and her driveway. So those would be the conditions.
Can we chat about it or we're taking a vote?
We're gonna chat about it after I second the motion.
Okay.
All right.
I'm, I'm not feeling this one, um, and, and the reason is there were, uh, at the, at the hearing prior to this, there were, uh, two next-door neighbors that weren't real keen on it, the one next-door neighbor specifically. There was a neighbor that lived behind that wasn't keen on it, um, for all the, all the typical reasons. Uh, rodents and vermin, uh, being one of them, predators, um, in the past. And we do approve some of these, but there are times that we turn them down. Uh, and I believe we should be turning this one down, uh, because if you're a neighbor and you're living next door to it, um, it is a concern, and I think, um, that being said, there are, there were, um, at least two, and I think three, uh, direct neighbors that weren't real happy, weren't happy about it at all and didn't want it approved. So, uh. So I will not be saying yes.
And, and that's absolutely correct, that there were the neighbors and they did...
And I think we need to take that into consideration on these, on this particular...
I, I agree, and, and we do take those concerns that they raised into consideration in the conditions that we established, particularly with respect to the food. And the neighbor to the east was also concerned about the location of the coop and her being able to see it from her windows through the, the fencing, which at certain angles gives a clear view into the, to the yard, that's why...
It was the neighbor to the west.
Neighbor to the west, right. And that's why the applicant agreed to cover that, so it would not be visible to the neighbor. In terms of the issue of, of attraction of rats, I mean, no, none of us are expert on chickens or rats, but my understanding is that rats are attracted to a number of, of things. Chickens are one of them, but bird seed is another, and there are lots of bird feeders in Aronacote where food is strewn to the ground and not picked up by the property owners and, and other birds, and other animals may feed on that. So I'm, and we've had, we've had a number of experiences in town with special use permits that we have approved for chickens, and I haven't, I'm not aware of any reports we received back from the town indicating that there have been a link between rats and those locations, with the exception of that one over off of Seneca, which was a particularly unusual situation, that an exterminator came, came in and was able to rectify and, and...
No, that wasn't the one, that was a different one. That was the rabbit one. That was the rabbit one was...
Was the rabbit one?
Yeah.
I knew there was another animal besides chickens, goats, and horses.
That was the rabbit issue that was off of St. Paul Boulevard.
That was on Armstrong.
All right, you got it.
But I'm thinking of the one on Seneca where she had ducks.
Three ducks.
They had a rat problem.
Ducks and three hens, and the neighbor had the rats.
Neighbor had rats in the garage, and they had an exterminator that came in and eventually cleared that up. As a matter of fact, I think before we approved it, it was rectified.
Yep.
Yeah. So I mean, I appreciate the neighbor's concerns, and I, and we do take that into consideration. And I think that the conditions that we impose are, address those concerns, and I have to take into account that the town board in the town ordinance has determined that chickens are appropriate in Aronacote. So it's not, it's a question of under what particular circumstances. I don't think her yard is too small, as others where we've denied it have been, and I think it's a reasonable accommodation and balance between the applicant and the neighbors. Any other comments? Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Agreed.
Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, and we are fully constituted. All right, the last item on our agenda, with the information, the packets for this evening's meeting, everyone should have received the draft of the minutes from the June, yeah, the June 3 meeting. Did everyone receive those? And have an opportunity to review them? Appears so. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as submitted.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say, oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. Not only are we fully constituted, we are now adjourned.
We hope you enjoyed this presentation of the Aronacote Zoning Board on ICAT Government Access.